The first issue, we have public comments.
I have something I would like to say. I'm sorry, I don't like to over. I spoke half an hour ago, but I have something I really would like to say quickly.
Okay, we don't want to just repeat what we're... You're not gonna... okay, go ahead.
I will not repeat what I said. I have something else that came up that...
Just give your...
You gotta come to the microphone.
Everybody can hear you.
Go to the microphone?
Yeah.
Because the outside camera can get you.
My name is Danielle Crozier. I know I just spoke half an hour ago, but over the course of your meeting, some things came to mind. First of all, I would like to say that the reason that I believe Steve Nixon is struggling to answer your questions about Quantum Leap is because he doesn't know what it did. We were a nine-through-twelve alternative education program. Thank you.
Have we any other public comments?
Yes, I'm Robin Kozlowski. I'm a parent of a child who went through the program. It is an awesome program. What I don't understand is if we have a program that is working, getting these kids prepared for life, why are we wasting time on programs that aren't even available yet? My... we're taking into consideration kids with diagnoses, where IEPs, all that stuff. My daughter had one, but she wasn't receiving special ed or anything like that in this program. She was able to function without all that other stuff because of the way they were learning and teaching. This program, I mean, people don't understand it. They just thought it was a place for these kids. My daughter wrote, I don't know how many pages of reports all the time. They went on class trips. They had people come in from other countries to teach the way that their life and their ways, which we helped in turn teach them of our ways. This program was... wasn't just the core. It was a whole thing, and these kids flourished. And I... and I can't... it just makes me so angry. Why dismantle the program if it works? Why can't we build on the same program? Add more kids to it? Give more kids a chance to be... and not only... these kids were also taught to work together, not, you know, just going to school, doing your thing. They were taught about life skills and dealing with certain things. It's an important, important program, and it's a shame that it's just... That's all I can say.
I'm Ellen Jones. I'm a retired teacher at Mount Anthony. I taught alternative education for 33 years. You need to do your homework, Mr. Nixon. If there are 10 students in alternative English, math, science, and social studies, why did you remove the teachers that were out in the building that's out in back? It used to be the CDC, who were teaching, who could have been teaching alternative education out there, like as it had been previously? To answer your question, sir, 30, 40 years ago, there was an alternative program where everyone worked a half day and went to school a half day. That program lasted until the liability became such that it was not worth it. It cost more to send a student to work, to hope that they would get paid, to hope that they would keep the job. It fell apart. It did not work well. I just think that you... I was taught that if you can save one life, then you've done a great job. The Croziers have saved how many years? 20 years, times 10, 200 lives? Those are kids that are succeeding, and you can't count the success on whether or not they graduated or whether or not their scores went up. You count the success as if they came out of the woodwork. They're not hiding anymore. They're doing their jobs, and they have jobs. They're raising their children. I'm a guardian at light them in court, in family court. I don't see many of those students. I see other former students or children of other former students, but I don't see any Quantum Leap kids. So something must be working right. I think that if you don't do something about this, you're going to have a big mess. You're going to have more kids and more trouble. Also, I think that the demographics in Burlington, Mr. Nixon, are way different than the demographics on Cape Cod. My other comment is, except for Mr. Holbrook, and I went to just about every exhibit there was, I never saw any school board member there. I never saw Mr. Colkeen there. If you want to support the programs and your schools, why aren't you there? Why aren't you visible? Why don't you know what's going on? How many of you ever went to see what goes on in the Quantum Leap program? How many of you came from a home where you weren't loved or cared for? But when you went to school, when you were a little kid in first and second and third grade, your teachers loved you when you wanted to go. By the time you got to seventh and eighth grade, teachers didn't care. When you went to the Quantum Leap program, there were two people who cared a hell of a lot about you. They called to see where you were if you weren't in school. If you were sick, they called to see how you were. If you didn't have clothes, they made sure you got some. If you didn't have enough food to eat at lunchtime, they made sure you had some, and they made sure you had breakfast. This is on top of teaching the things that needed to be taught. These were just things that they did out of the goodness of their hearts. You're taking this away. You're taking away the security that these children had, and that's a sad thing. And I feel very sad about the whole thing. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Rick Crozier. I just want a little bit of clarification here because Mr. Nixon just gave his report, and there were either a few things that he either got wrong or were, in my opinion, incorrect because I worked there, okay? There is no such thing as the Bridges Program. It does not run right now. There are 10 kids that are in my class that were going to be in the Quantum Leap Exhibit Program, but it is no longer running. I had a meeting with Mr. Nixon, Nick Gault, Nancy Vanderbilt, David Barrio, Christopher Barnes, and I asked them, what do you want me to do? Because the curriculum, which I have in my hand, that we drew up for the entire year, was no longer going to be usable because the Quantum Leap Exhibit Program was not going to run, and everything revolved around the Quantum Leap Exhibit Program. Everything we did was to be exhibited by the students, for their families, and the public. That's part of performance education. I know this because I am there. I don't see Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon has been to my program three times in two years. Number two, there are no alternative classes being taught in the East Campus Building with me. Those rooms are empty. They are currently occupied if they are ever being used by some special education teachers from V-19, which is the neighboring program. There is no such thing as a class right now that is being taught in the East Campus Building called Alternative English, or Alternative Math, or Alternative Science. I know because if they were there, I would see them every day. I teach an alternative social studies class. There are no other teachers there with me. I want to make sure that that's very clear and that you were not misled or misinterpreted the information that was just conveyed to you. To answer your question earlier, you asked about the Twilight Program. The Twilight Program has been, since its inception, a males-only program. Just so you are aware of that, Sue McGuire was responsible for the creation of the Twilight Program. There have never been any girls that participated in it. There have been girls that have been denied participation in that program in the past. A couple of things that I thought were interesting is that the board, I believe, you just said, received this report in June. This report is dated March, so I believe Mr. Nixon received it in March. When we received this report electronically, we were not allowed to share it to anyone, email it to anyone, or print a copy of it to be read. That was very, very, very explicit. And as a matter of fact, in order to get a copy that I printed, I had to email Mr. Nixon and ask him if he would send me a copy of it. Now, I wonder why this transpired and why this was suppressed, but I'll leave you to inquire about that. The idea that the classes are watered down in alternative programs, to be perfectly honest with you, is ludicrous. You can ask the students. You can ask their parents. Some of you, by the way, had grandchildren that I taught. They do more work than any applied level watered-down curriculum. I know because I am the only teacher on the campus that teaches both. For the last 20 years, I have taught, by choice, either applied-level curriculum, which I'll be more than happy to share with any of you. If you come by my classroom, I'll show you exactly what it is. And then I will also show you what, in the past, our students in the Quantum Leap Alternative Program, not the Bridges Program, the Quantum Leap Alternative Program. The Bridges Program is a summer program. It's an intervention. That's what it is, for at-risk students identified with very specific criteria that Mr. Payne probably could share with you. Just wanted to make sure that those things were very clear. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Tadrow. I'm not good at speaking, so bear with me. Just wanted you to know that I had a daughter that was in eighth grade. She had the choice to either stay in eighth grade or go to Bridges. She chose to go to Bridges, and honestly, I wasn't sure how she was going to do. The expectations were quite large. I didn't think she'd make it. By the end of summer, she was writing thousand-word essays with ease and very fast. In ninth grade, she joined Quantum Leap. She did a 24-page report at the end of the year. My daughter's done excellent in that program. She also got pregnant in 10th grade, and I think if it wasn't for the Crozier's support and caring, she wouldn't continue to go to school. And she has now graduated with a two-year-old daughter. They have a way about them. My son missed a driving class one day because Mr. Crozier was too interesting. He forgot all about it. My son has disabilities as well, and he was... had an IEP. They're great people. They're good for students. I don't know how they do it, but they do. They succeed for them, and I think you should know.
Hi, my name is Siobhan Crozier. As I said before, I'm glad that this part of the meeting is going to be recorded and in part of the formal meeting, unlike the section before discussing Quantum Leap, which I find interesting to say the least that it was put separately, not recorded, and not publicized, that this would be 30 minutes before the formal meeting for the school That's bizarre and baffling, that the public did not know. No one knew, until earlier today is when I found out, and I left work to be here. I drove three hours from Burlington to be here for this meeting. This... this program, it's so much more than you think it is. This is not just an alternative program. It's not like any other program that Steve Nixon has described to you rather poorly. This is not like any other program. This program is nine-through-twelve. This program not only helps them with education-wise, it helps them with their family, helps them with their home life, get through what they needed. This program is a support system. It's not just education, and that is where this is different. No one seems to understand that, and I have been dealing with this my entire life, and I have a very different perspective than most of you. And this is shameful for our community, and it's ridiculous. This should be dealt with far before now. The fact that none of you have an idea of what this program even did as school board members is crazy. Where are you? What are you doing? Why do you not understand what this program did before it even got cut? Where are you? What are you... How can you be school board members without knowing what this program was? And that's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Brianna Higgins. I was here last month, as some of you might recognize me. I'm not sure if all of you guys saw the video I had sent out. Don't plan to present it or anything. I just wanted to know if anyone took the time to see it. Also, there is no way to know if Quantum Leap is effective if you guys didn't go to any exhibits prior to the program ultimately being dismantled. You guys... do you guys keep up with MAU football, wrestling, all that? I believe that Quantum Leap deserves the same respect as the athletes do because when I went to school, I was the oddball, and doing exhibits gave me my chance to shine because I didn't do chorus, I didn't do sports, because I didn't care to. I think we need this program back so the kids that are left in the dark get as much as attention as the athletes. And like I said before, if this program is back, I am going back to school, and I will be a teaching assistant in that building. And I don't know much else to say, but Mr. O'Connor, Jerry O'Connor, he got his job back the same way we're trying to get Ms. Crozier's job back. I think we could have the same results. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Brillan. I went to Bridges the summer after eighth grade year because I had failed every single one of my classes, and when I went into the program, I... I loved school. I started going to my classes. I started doing my homework, and I was a much better student and a person. Mr. and Mrs. Crozier have looked after me all these years, and they tell me when I'm wrong and when I'm right, and they try to teach me through it. And it's so upsetting to see that this program that's been going on for years is gone. These... these two are the best teachers I've ever had, and in that high school, I can't say that many teachers really cared the way they do. And that's all of that I got to say.
If there are no other comments, we move on now to our regular scheduled events for the meeting. The first item on the agenda after public comments is Friday's. We have a Treasury Report.
I'll move it.
The second, please.
Second.
You have a second? Second. Any discussion on that? All who was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote to attendions. The budget status report is, for your information, the award scholarship has already been taken care of. That should be... that should really be FYI. Leon signed that sometime last week, I think. Correct, Leon? Yes, you did.
I signed it, yes.
Yes. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda, Fran?
So moved.
And a second?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion on any items on the consent agenda? If not, all who was in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to our pensions, policies? We have none. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We go down to the committees' report. Amy, do you want to do education?
Yes. So I guess I'm reporting on today.
Excuse me just for a minute. If you wouldn't mind holding your conversation outside the building, we're having trouble hearing. If you'd like to stay here, more than happy to have you.
So tonight, we had... we held an education committee meeting at 6:30. On the agenda was an update from Dr. Nixon on alternative programming at the high school. We had robust comments from the public on Quantum Leap for about 15 minutes at the start of the meeting. Mr. Nixon gave an... Dr. Nixon gave an overview of the programs currently in place, and we talked a little bit about the formation of a committee to evaluate how to move forward with alternative programming. And we need to... we need to figure out... I think the board needs to... I think I need some guidance from the board about how we want to... what you'd like from the education committee, what type of leadership you'd like on this topic, if at all, if that's appropriate. I would just... I would just like some input.
Sure. I think that's... I know that we have two members in the board commenting on it. Does anybody would like... do you recommend that we have a meeting that would deal with this subject relatively soon? Speak up.
Yeah, I think that there was just a larger question about the report and whether... question in my mind, maybe no one else has this question, but whether we were being tasked to review the recommendations and make decisions, and maybe the recommendations as augmented by Dr. Nixon. Again, I'm not sure if that was other people's understanding or not, but that... and if so, is that work for the Ed Committee, the Education Committee, or for the board?
I don't quite understand what you're saying. Do you feel that the board should be discussing whether they were fully informed of these changes that will be made and were part of the decision?
Well, no. No.
There were no changes made, all right? I don't know how many times we can say that. There was a resignation, but there were no changes made. We can continue the discussion in the executive... in the Education Committee, looking at this report and deciding if you want to make changes, but Dr. Nixon did not close or eliminate any programs. And the resignation may have had an effect of discontinuing a part of it, but that's what we need to be clear about.
I think if we have any more discussion, there's things you can't say in an open session, and it is a personnel issue. And I'd rather have everything in an executive session only for the simple reason we can't say in the public. It's why I can't understand why some of you don't understand that. I mean, you're going to get yourself in trouble.
So I... no, I think this is... what I'm asking about is nothing to do with the personnel issue.
It's all programs.
It's all... It's about the report and the recommendations and whether there's work for the board to do or the committee to do on those.
That's my question.
Whether they're being asked to do that.
Right. And I don't know that there is work for the Education Committee to do. My first glance, my first understanding of our role is that we have an administrator who is a professional educator, and I'm not. I'm a school board member, and I want to hear what the public has to say, and I want to be a conduit between the administration and the public. But I don't know if we have work to do. I think I would like to... if it's appropriate, I think I would like to continue to hear what Dr. Nixon and his colleagues have to say about how, you know, how all populations at the high school are being educated, but I don't know that... I don't know that we have... I don't know that it's... I don't know that it's our role to give input.
I think what is evident, Dr. Nixon has presented you this report. The next thing that I would mention, if he is going to recommend any specific changes that is happening in alternative programs, that would come in a form of recommendation from Dr. Nixon to the Education Committee to consider, then make a recommendation to the full board. I don't mean to speak for you, Steve, but...
Steve, I was a little concerned about...
It's hard to speak about something that hasn't been constructed yet.
Exactly.
I mean, we know what the problems are. I mean, if you want to talk about the problems, I'd be more than willing to reach out to Dr. Reardon to actually come and explain his report to you personally. And he can tell you exactly what he saw, what he determined, and why he determined that. I mean, he could give you a lot more of a clarifying insight into it than I did. He wrote it, and he saw firsthand, so I'd be more than willing to reach out to him to do that. As far as our plans are, our first committee meeting is tomorrow, and like I said at the Education Committee, I would ask that the board send someone to be a representative on that committee. We know what makes good social-emotional programs. We know what makes good alternative programs. What we need to work out is the specificity of it because there's a lot of things attached to it that it's... you start a snowball and it gets bigger as you push it downhill. And so what's the staffing going to look like? Are the staffing numbers going to equate to the staffing numbers that currently exist? Will I have to look at positions in the building and see if they're transferable to the alternative program for cost-saving measures? I mean, there's a lot of hurdles to go over to get this done in time. So it's not so much as we know what... we know what works and we know how it looks. It's making sure the infrastructure is there. I mean, the alternative programs that we have now, they're not out in the external building like Mr. Crozier said because they're in the main building. That's where... that's where the classrooms are.
Which is where they should be.
Which is a discussion we have to have. Do we have the space in the building to move the program inside? And what... is there a cost associated to that? So there's a lot of moving parts to this. The bottom line is, I can just reiterate, the administration felt that we were not doing all of our students justice in the programs that existed. Dr. Reardon, who is the Director of Education at Cassillum University, also came to that conclusion.
And would that be helpful to the board, to have Dr. Reardon?
I don't need Dr. Reardon anymore. What I'm looking at, we have a structure, and if that's correct in terms of a committee that's going to form, that should be in guidelines with the parent involvement committee, I mean, parent involvement policy that we have, which select, get people from the community, get board members, and participate in those things that we're talking about. Is that the committee that you're talking about, that you're meeting, that you're having input from parent, board, and other members on a regular basis?
And it's not fully formed because obviously we don't have a board member. We have to ask the committee, when we meet tomorrow, is there any constituency that we feel needs to be represented, and how do we reach out to them? So right now, we have a structure of about eight to 10 people to begin with, representatives of special education, the central office, representatives of the high school, hopefully representatives of the board, representatives from the clinicians and the psychologists within the school, because all of that plays a part, because we're simultaneously redoing two programs.
Right. And that... I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that committee is in guidelines and synced with our policies. That's what he's talking about. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So all we need is members, if you want to participate, to volunteer and be part of that.
Amy, would you be willing to...
Well, when is that meeting?
Tomorrow's at 2:30.
I have work. I can't.
I, I work, I can't.
How come?
But it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean Amy there. I mean, this is sort of a, this is sort of a foundational meeting to set up further meetings. It doesn't mean you can't be part of the Committee. I mean, no decisions are going to be made tomorrow.
So I can be part of that committee?
Right. I, I think that would be appropriate if they have Amy, even though she can't be there. And I would hope as you form the meeting times that you would check, I'm sure you will, check with Amy to be sure you get a time that's convenient to, for all, for all people. So Board comfortable with that? So we still have the question as to whether we want to have the author of the report down. I, I tend to agree with Leon. I'm not really sure that, that we need that. I'm, I'm more interested in what this committee is going to come up with in terms of concrete examples. One question I would like to, to have you answer though, Steve, if I understood Rick Crozier correctly, he said that there was no Bridges program being carried out now? And you had said that, that program, does that mean that he's not teaching the program, but it's been taught at the high school by high school teachers?
Yes, that's what he's teaching. It's on the schedule as Bridges.
Okay. He's, I just want to be sure that I understand that there was a.
That's, that's what it's called. That's what's on the schedule hanging on my wall next to my desk.
Okay.
Because actually it's broken down within one period to two different things, but it's called Bridges because when you were in the summer program, one of the findings in the evaluation of, of, that was an issue with Dr. Reardon, is when you joined it, they talked about it being a summer program, but when you were in the summer program, you have to, if you were going to be accepted and stay in the summer program, you have to sign up for a whole year of the program. And on our schedule, it's called Bridges. The word Quantum Leap does not appear in the high school schedule, never has.
Well, there's nothing in the report about, about the Bridges program.
It's Quantum Leap. When you, when you read in there, when Dr. Reardon talks about how the students transfer from the middle school to the high school, that's the Bridges program.
But I'm saying that they're, they're one of those words.
That's, that's the Bridges program.
And that's what was following.
Because that's what, that's what a Bridge program is, the transition from one, from one building to another at a different, different grade level.
Very good. So if I could just summarize this, what, what we're, we're going to do is that Steve will form this committee. That committee will meet. And the recommendations from that committee will come back to the Board with final approval before, before any of those things are, are made final.
And go back to Education Committee.
Yeah, go back to Education Committee, but eventually come back to the Board.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Does that seem to make sense?
The time, you mentioned tomorrow's meeting is at 2:30 to what, 2:30 at the high school?
At the high school. I, I may be able to just step in since Amy won't be there with, with Ed if I can, but I have, we have a, another meeting.
We're in the building.
Not in the conference room.
I, I think though that to have a meeting, I think the members of the Committee should be committed to making those. I think people that, that come in off and on sort of when they can make it difficult, you know, to, to move forward with things. So if you really would like to be on the Committee, that's one thing. But if you just want to stop in occasionally, I don't mean that critically, Leon, but I just think for consistency and to get things done, it's better to have a Committee that is formed and, and expected to be there unless they've got a legitimate excuse. Amy, are you comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So as I, we will not ask Dr. Reardon to come, to come and speak to us. We'll leave it in the hands of the Committee and see where we go from there. Is everybody comfortable with that? If they are, we would like to move on then. Food service, why don't you bind that with Ag? I know you've met.
All right. Yeah. I was going to say Ron and Leon were also there, so if they want to jump in. There was a food service meeting on September 19th at the middle school. There was a report about the summer meals, which unfortunately were down, according to, to the Abbey Group, about 6,000 from the previous summer because there were certain housing complexes that refused to allow people to congregate to eat, and this is one of the requirements of the summer, summer meal program. So that made it difficult for them to serve food in certain places. The Abbey Group has also tried to find a site in Pownell, but none has worked out so far, and they are continuing to search for next year. They have the idea of reaching out to more churches with perhaps the help of St. Peter's. I think Leon visited St. Peter's and said it was very successful and, and I think many can attest to that. Maureen O'Neill shared pictures of the new signs that she has helped create for eating areas in the elementary and middle school. The Food Service Advisory Committee is still looking for more participants. I say this every time. But especially at this time, they would love feedback and more participation from students, parents, and community members, and this is a big year. So they just stressed that this would be a particularly important time to join the Committee if you wanted to give your feedback. And again, there's always snacks, usually chocolate chip cookies that, that interest you. And Amanda has reached out to building principals about this participation. Hasn't heard back yet about that, but we have ideas of possibly interesting culinary students, student councils, and they have been posting on Instagram and Facebook to try and drum up support. In addition, the digital menu has been going well and the Abbey Group has been invited, I think Leon, to come to the SBSU Board and demonstrate how to bring up the Abbey Group online menu and how it's interactive and what you can do with that. Next, we had the.
Good question. Did I read somewhere about a water issue? They were having trouble getting the hose or getting water over to the, to growing area. Paul, do you know anything about that?
Oh. Oh, so, yeah. So I haven't gone on to the Ag.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Okay. Yeah. So moving on to Ag land, our last meeting was on October 7th. Talked about the Family Fitness Fest that happened in early September. It was rained out last spring, I think, or just the weather was not cooperative. So we had it in the early fall through a grant from Rise Vermont, and it was, I think, fairly well attended. I was there. There was a color run. We did some garden demonstrations and allowed people who came to take home seeds and plant them in egg cartons and take a tour through the garden. And there was a lot going on. There was a smoothie bike and it seemed like a fun event. Reports from the farmer and the sustainability teacher are that the summer season went well, transplants were moved. There was help with weeding, especially from the mosaic kids in the summer. I think there were two weeks of mosaic kids helping out. I guess some trouble with squash this year, but otherwise everything grew well and they were able to share the food with the cafeteria. Food was used in sustainability classes and sometimes sent home with students if they had excess and the students were interested in taking that home. One other thing we discussed is a desire for heat in the hoop house. The sustainability teacher has stressed that it makes it difficult for the kids that she has in the winter season to really enjoy the gardening portion of the class because it's so cold out there. And so this is sort of a long-term issue that they're looking into. So first, I think she's going to check with someone at a UVM extension about the best ways to heat, and then we can figure out, I think, how much it would cost to have electricity added out there and, you know, how to do it in a way that is feasible. So they're still investigating that, but that's been an issue for some time. We did have Kurt Austin from the Ideals Program came, which was nice. He's interested in working with Farmer Frank a little bit more and unifying their efforts. He brought his kids out to the garden, apparently started his kids planting pumpkin seeds in the high school greenhouse, and then they were able to transplant them out in the middle school garden. So he's looking into ways to bring his students out there, but there are some difficulties, namely the 42-minute class, classes, which are very short. And also just transportation. You know, the high school and middle school are not too far away. It's a, it's a short time period and not sure, you know, at this point, I think teachers are using or driving students themselves, and that needs to be worked out. Let's see. A little bit of discussion about a three-year health and nutrition grant that was awarded through Bennington College and, you know, Frank Pelsono and Liz Strasman are working on this. It involves a variety of community groups and includes plans to start gardens in certain area elementary schools. I'm not sure which, but I think Pownell has expressed an interest at this point. So, and they have, I'm, I'm not sure. That's sort of a, a larger grant that has a lot in the works and possibly sustainability teacher talked about possibly getting food prep carts and going to the middle, or sorry, to the elementary schools to do some cooking in the classes with the kids. So these are just ideas at this point. The youth Ag program with Catherine Keys is coming back to the middle school garden in the spring of 2020. And she'll be bringing a shed from North Bennington, which is really helpful because we've been needing some more space for the CDC tools that needed to be moved over to the garden. So they will be using space in the garden as well as hopefully Kurt Austin from the Ideals Program. And that's about it.
Are you going to, we, is the program utilizing the greenhouse at the high school, that does have electricity and heat and all those things?
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think the middle school is using that, but there are certain teachers like, like Kurt Austin, who's using that high school greenhouse. And also I've heard other science teachers mention to me that they use them occasionally. And I think there was, I don't know, maybe Steve, you can speak to this. There was a garden behind the high school, but it had to be moved or couldn't be used anymore because of something with a, too close to the, to a flood wall.
Don't worry about that. But it is a nice greenhouse and it does have all the facilities.
Yeah. I'm not sure how much is being used, but I do hear on occasion.
Any questions on either one of those issues? Thank you very much. There's been a lot happening. It's great to see those things used. It's marvelous to think of the food that's being raised there being, you know, part of the community's diet, I think. It's, it's great. Thank you very much. Finance, the Finance Committee met and discussed a number of things. The two major issues were the possible acquisition of an artificial field and the redoing of the, of the field that we now play football on, a grass field there. The other thing is that we agreed, or we wanted to give some thought to having a master plan that would take a look at our facility, particularly the high school facility, in terms of long-term goals. What we felt was necessary was that it, we have some idea as to the sort of things that we should be addressing as the building gets older. We want to be sure that we keep up with the building, but we also want to be sure that we are in compliance and that we do things in an organized way. So we are in the process of consulting with, with, or asked Paul to consult with some people that would bring us their idea of a facilities report. As I understand it, there's a school that's done the same sort of thing in, in the Burlington area, where they had a, a survey such as we're talking about done, and they've already implemented and started to do things to bring their building up to code and to what it should be in a way that is fiscally responsible. We haven't done any major consideration of our building, as far as I know, in 50 years. And after 50 years, things change and we ought to have a process on it. When we discussed the field, everybody seemed in agreement that it would be very nice to have an artificial field there. We could use it for all sorts of things. We could use it for soccer. We could use it for lacrosse. We could use it for football. We could use it for many other things. Also, we were informed that the track that goes around it needs to be, needs to have some attention. Paul has worked with two associations that would give us a facilities plan for, for that particular area, for the athletic facilities, particularly the field and the surrounding amenities, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, the track, that sort of thing. And there is a, there is a motion that I would like to propose to the Board that deals with that last night. Does anybody have it there right in front of them?
Eighteen.
For $18,000?
Eighteen plus.
Eighty-five.
Eighteen ninety-five, eighteen thousand ninety-five dollars.
Eighteen ninety-five by M.
MSK.
MSK. Thank you. We lost it. The two, we had two proposals. One had cost $36,477 and the other at $18,095. Paul has told us that the people from MSK have done this sort of thing before. They've been successful. And it would certainly be the way, the only way that we can then discuss how we want to finance it if we want to move forward. It will give us an indication as to what it would cost, as well as the time sequence that we would need to get it done. Ed?
There was quite a spread on proposed estimate costs. Paul is still here and I'm.
He is here.
I'm wondering if he can enlighten me anyway as to why there was such a, a large discrepancy.
We looked at both proposals. The person hours involved in each one, one was 170 hours, one was 176 hours. With the one firm, all the engineering things were done in-house, whereas in the second firm, they outsourced out, which added additional costs. So that's what the, the major.
I didn't see the report to the meeting tonight.
In simplest terms, that was the biggest difference between the two reports.
That explains it. Thank you.
So I'd like a motion.
Go move.
To, to accept the bid of MSK Engineering and Goldstone Architects for the request proposal RFP to conduct a feasibility analysis for renovate and upgrade Spinelli Field Complex pair.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd love to have, is there, Paul, is there a way we can, you can get back to us sooner rather than later on, on what they think their timeline will be for completing it, so that we can?
Once, once it's awarded, we'll have a meeting with them to say, okay, what's proposed timeline?
Because we want to work back from, I mean, I think the goal for the March town meeting would be.
Like, as I cautioned.
I know. But I just, I don't want to dismiss it before it's not real.
I think it's important for them to realize, I'm sure they do this sort of thing, but you can sort of explain to them that the Board is anxious if we are going to do this, to move it forward as quickly as we possibly can. And in order to do that, we'd have to have it on the ballot for the March.
Which means you would need it by mid-January.
Which means we need to warrant, warrant, what is it, 30 days ahead?
But by time to write that, and all, you would need it by mid-January, and that's where the timeline gets tight. It's not about meeting it for March.
So, right.
I didn't think we were trying to do that for this, right, this next year.
Well, let's, let's just see what they have to say and we'll, and we'll move it. Because it wouldn't be a budget. It would probably be, you know, be a bond rep.
Yeah, we wanted to plan right and take the time to get things and look at all these things. And that's, I'm in favor of having the group look at what they need to, we need to consider out there along with all the other projects we got and trying to work them in. Then to say we're going right to vote on.
So we have a motion.
Is this just for the Spinelli Field?
Yes.
The other part, the whole building is in the budget planning for next year.
Right.
Are there any, are there any other issues on this before we vote on it? We had, we had a motion. We had a second. Am I correct, Richard?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Very good.
I think Father Spinelli would have said, playing in an old field builds character. And I played under that man, so I know.
David, can you move on to administrative report, Steve?
Thank you. Since we last met on September 27th, it, that was, that was the end of Spirit Week, which is leading up to Homecoming. And on the 27th, we had an early dismissal for In-Service Day, and during that day, we had the pep rally, where each, each class wore a specific color that attached itself to the Mount Anthony colors. And the kids had a great time and everyone was well behaved. There were no issues whatsoever and it went really, really well. The next night on the 28th was the Homecoming Dance, and we had, I think, close to 400 students who came to the dance. And again, it, you know, thanks to Dave Berrio and his, and his team, it went smooth. There were no issues whatsoever. The kids had a great time. Music was a little loud from what I hear, but that. Music was a little loud from what I hear, but that, other than that, it went over well. On October 1st, and if you remember when Nancy Vanderbilt came to speak to you about guidance, she said one of her goals this year was to have more informational nights for parents to alleviate some anxiety about what's expected of a, a parent of a junior or a senior or a sophomore. So we had our first night on October 1st and it was a senior parent night and there were approximately 45 people there. So, and it went very, very well. We had a representative of MCLA College in Massachusetts explaining the college experience to the parents and he did an excellent job. To be quite honest, I really thought we were going to get a sort of skewed approach because he worked for a college and was trying to get kids to go there, but he was very honest about parents telling them what colleges want you to see when you go on campus business and what they don't want you to see and where they should really go and really look at things and really check behind the curtain, so to speak. So he, he did a very, very good job. We had a representative of VSAC there to speak to the parents about financing and our guidance counselors did excellent presentation. And then we all made ourselves available at the end of the night for individual parent questions and it went very, very well. So kudos to Nancy and the guidance department for, for planning that and having it go off without a hitch. The next thing coming up, we have something new on October 22nd. It's the freshman experience. And in the past, we've done a sophomore summit and we've done, we've done job planning and career planning with juniors. We've never really done anything with freshmen. And in working with some of the community liaisons in the workforce, we felt it'd be a good idea to get students involved in career decisions and planning as, as soon as possible. So this year, we're having a freshman experience on October 22nd. It's from eight to 10:15. It's in the gym and in the auditorium, in, in the cafeteria, sorry. And students will be exploring various careers, various colleges and various military options. And as, from what I understand, the way it's, the way this was planned is the students will be organized in groups of 12 and different facilitators will rotate from group to group, giving them various perspectives of the different options they have. So if you get a chance, if you are free between eight and 10:15 on the 22nd, that would be a great experience for our freshmen.
Are the parents involved in that or just?
No, there's no parents involved, it's only for students. Well, we will have a, we are planning on having a, a freshman parent night like we did with the senior parents. And just, just for clarification, because I forgot, when we did the, the parent night about college, the day before, we had, we spent the day with the students on career and military paths. So we covered the whole gamut over those two days.
Steve, just a question on that. There's been a lot of talk in the media these days about alternatives to a four-year college. In other words, for people going into the trades, which people can make a very good living at. Do we do anything to encourage kids, maybe through the CDC or something, to, to look at alternative ways to spend those next four years?
Well, that's part of what these, these days are with like the sophomore summit and with the freshman experience. There's people there to talk to them about certification, you know, what certificates, I mean, in meetings that we've had with some of the companies in the area, you need certification in some areas to, to get, get a job. And those representatives will be at this to explain to students, you know, what the cost is, how you get certification, and the process you need to do if you want to, say, become a plumber or whatever the case may be.
Does anybody explain to those students what, you know, what the potential in terms of earnings are in some of those occupations? Like a plumber can make a very, very decent living.
One of the things that they, they do is, it's not a disc, but they will do eventually with the students, is it's called the reality fair. So what they do at the reality fair is they do exactly that. They take a student and say, what do you want to do in the future? And then the student tells them and then they go through the whole process to show them, well, this is how much you're going to make. Now, let's, you have to save X amount, you have to pay rent, this is how much rents are going for. So they let students get a real life experience of if you want to be this, this is your income and this is what your, your lifestyle will be based on that income. And sometimes students make decisions based on that experience. So, and that's a really good experience for them.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Steve? Tim?
I just have a couple of items to share with the board this evening. The first one is I wanted to thank a member, a group of about 12 teachers here at the middle school who have been working to restructure our faculty meetings. We have once a month faculty meetings like most folks and working this year to do a little more celebration and recognition of each other and building a climate, a positive climate or strengthening the climate. And so we, we had our second faculty meeting of the school year this year and it has been a, it has been a pleasure to lead those faculty meetings. So I want to just thank the members of that committee. They will continue to gather throughout the school year. Their plan is to meet the week before faculty to do some planning. I'd just share that we now start our faculty meetings with a mindfulness activity, which has gone over surprisingly well, but I have been tasked with leaving, leaving them with a quote of the day, which has proven to be a challenge for me, but I'm working on it. A reminder too for middle school parents, next Friday is a half-day at the middle school as it is for other schools, but just in case your students are telling you that they're getting out of school on Friday at 11:15 next week, they are telling the truth. We have bus service, we'll be feeding them lunch, but they will be coming home early. It is a full day for professional staff and we have professional development scheduled for the afternoon. I also just want to say thank you to a group that has been meeting weekly. Just inform the board of this progress. The middle school, the elementary schools offer after-school extended opportunities for kiddos, a variety of choice activities. We also offer at each campus an opportunity for summer programming, five weeks of summer programming. The middle school benefits from this board supporting as a budget item monies to support that, but we also receive the 21st Century Grant, which is awarded through the state of Vermont. It's a five-year award. At the middle school, we receive about a hundred thousand dollars a year and we are up for renewal this year and that is possible. It's not a one-time grant. And so in an effort to, the, the process is very competitive and in an effort to build kind of a unified program and a more competitive bid, we have been working as a K through 18. And so I just want to thank Donna Colley from Monument and Kim Tenner from Molly Stark, Amy Volpe from the Mosaic Program. And we have kind of a larger group of community members, representatives from business that are kind of gathering and putting together this plan. Like I said, it's a very competitive grant. We attended a training in Rutland yesterday. The grant is due the first week of February and my hope is that we put together, well, my goal is to help put together a very strong bid and we'll, we'll know sometime in spring if that grant comes through. And that would fund programming at all the elementary schools and at the middle school and it would also offer summer programming for all students K through 8. So we're in the process of what that would look like. We feel that Bennington is, Bennington County is an excellent recipient candidate for this grant in, in terms of serving kids who are at risk, offering high-quality educational opportunities, but most importantly, our goal, and I want to thank Kim Tenner for putting this forward, is equity. We are working to provide this as an opportunity for all kids. So that's transportation, supervision that's convenient to working families. And so I just wanted to give the board kind of an update that that's what we're working on right now and that group continues to meet weekly. Probably have to ramp up the effort as we get a little closer to the deadline, but it is good work and it's been a positive experience to be working so closely with the elementary schools.
Does that affect the Mosaic program?
It does. Absolutely does.
Okay. Jim, maybe you've already discussed this in a previous meeting, but did you ever go over with the board, the Oberland, the, and Tom Cosley's contribution, what experience those kids had?
I think I shared that at the previous meeting.
You probably, if I wasn't here, that's why I thought they.
And I know a, a letter was composed and sent. Karen was good to make sure we got that.
Yep, it was, I remember signing it. Any, any questions of Tim? If not, we'll go, continue then, superintendent's report. I don't believe this.
Just a couple of reminders, the Vermont School Board Regional Meeting, if anyone's registered for that, that is next Monday afternoon, 5:30 at Manchester Elementary School, Vermont School Board Association Regional Meeting. And then the Vermont School, Superintendent's Association and the Vermont School Board Association Joint Fall Conference, somebody who's registered, that is November 7th and November 8th. There's still time to register for that. My office can handle that if you decide that you want to go, that's up at Lake Morey.
Thank you very much.
Jim, is there anything going on with consolidation or anything that we should, you could bring us up to speed on or we need to know about or anything?
So with Arlington and Sandgate coming into the, to, so I imagine sometime after November 15th, Arlington will elect three members to start attending the SBSU Board, Sandgate will elect one. I have not heard that they have done that yet. Says no earlier than November 15th, doesn't say by November 15th. And we do have a lot, and they're supposed to limit their participation on the SU Board to items of merger. It's not really consolidation, they remain, they get to keep their own individual boards and they're just going to operate under our SU. It's not the type of merger that happened with the elementary boards becoming one and they will be operational under the supervisory union by July 1 of 2021. So that's where I mean, there's, you know, a lot of time to, to talk about. As far as with the elementary merger boards, still a lot of work to be done on that. They formed this month a facility committee, similar to how you have one here, we're trying to get them to model their operation pretty much on how MNU operates so that we look at one master plan for the entire district and not just individual buildings. And there are still lots of post-merger items that need to be worked on as far as the elementary, not all policies are universally applied. The attendance zones, you know, for two years, nothing can change, but we're six months into this merger or almost six months into this merger, before you know it'll be time that, that, that two-year timeline goes off. So we need to be having discussions about school choice, about attendance zones. Right now, they're defined by the same, basically, town boundaries that they were before, but there's nothing that says it has to continue. And the interesting thing that I think the boards have discussions on is we continue to operate all six elementary schools in a summer fashion. We should one designate a magnet school or should there be some grade changes, you know, of wide, open opportunities for students of all the communities that are in the elementary district. It's going to take time. This, this board seems to operate in disregard of community boundaries. That's what's for the good of all the students who go to those school and high school and ultimately that's going to be the integral of the elementary school district. Certainly, if you have a representative from Powell, Chasberg, Woodford, they're passionate about their own schools, but we need a little bit of broader picture.
What question, when Arlington and Sandgate come under the SBSU, will they then be eligible to send their students down here? Either Mount Anthony or to the elementary schools?
So they are, they are, they are still a separate school district under this merger. They're just, their supervisory union is what is dissolving and they are coming under our supervisory union. We do have limited school choice with Arlington currently right now. Was it like 10 seats, up to 10? Seats could happen that we have, and there's a March deadline in student, a deadline that students need to apply. So there are some students from here already attend Arlington and some students from Arlington will attend here. I don't know what the current number is, but mine just stands at no more than 10 seats and it's, it was by mutual agreement. So I don't see that changing. They, they will operate their high school and will operate ours.
Thank you. Liam?
We've started the superintendent's evaluation according to 2600 policy. Just, we just had a meeting this to let you know that we've started that process. And we also have members form contract negotiations for both teachers and. Okay, I'm done.
Are there any other, any comments? Just my report is just to back up what Liam was saying. We are in the process of beginning the, the contract negotiations for both the teachers and for the support personnel. We have a number of board members here who will be participating in that. Fran and Liam and Rob will all be participating in different aspects of that, as well as myself.
It will not be next Thursday, which originally was announced as November, I mean, October 17th is not going to happen.
Right. And it's, it will keep you informed as time goes on. Those first year meetings really just have to do basically setting up a calendar and ground rules, that sort of thing.
And November 7th is the tentative date.
Right. Okay. Are there any other issues that should be brought before this board?
We'll be having, we didn't have a policy meeting this month, but we plan to have one next month. And so we're trying to make sure we review all of our policies in line with all of the things that are going on right now. So if you have one in particular that you're interested in and wanted to have us add and add that to the agenda, we'll be more than happy to take that.
Are there any other issues? They don't accept the motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
On a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.